Wanted to watch it, but I didn't. Yeah, my, like you can't go back.
I'm watching on YouTube. Well, I wasn't smart enough.
Hmm. Is it ghost?
I was concerned.
Council. Mayor, are we ready? I mean, I'll wait a few more minutes if you need to shuffle papers around some more. Well, I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's city council meeting. And I would ask that you would please rise with me for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Holy Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts for the opportunity to serve our community. We thank you for the gift of this city, its people, and the shared responsibility of leadership entrusted to us. Look favorably on this meeting of council, city administration, first responders, and community members. Open our ears and hearts to hear one another and to serve this community to the best of our abilities. Thank you for all in attendance. Bless our efforts today and in the days to come, and may our work grow and strengthen the city of Lebanon. Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Cheryl, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Council, you have all received the minutes for October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five through, or for our October twenty-seventh meeting and then also our November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five meetings. And at this time, are there any corrections or thoughts from council regarding those minutes? Okay, hearing none, the minutes will stand. Next, we have our budget report, and this budget report is for the period of January first through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With more than eighty-three percent of the budget year completed, revenues are at ninety-eight percent, with most real estate taxes collected and earned income tax performing above expectations. Expenditures are around seventy-eight percent. We are performing better than budget in both categories.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions regarding the budget from council? From the press? And the public? All right. And next on our agenda, we have a department update, and this is from our police chief, Eric Sims, and I will pass the floor off to him.
Thank you. So in two thousand and twenty-five, we haven't, our numbers remain stable as far as hiring and recruiting. In two thousand and twenty-five, we brought two new additions to the Lebanon City Police Department. Got ahead of myself. Brought four new additions in two thousand and twenty-five, and we are currently in the hiring process right now, hoping to bring some new police officers on the street and employed with the city here. Two thousand and twenty-five has been a busy year. There's been management changes, administrative changes. In two thousand and twenty-five, we implemented a new reporting system through, through Tyler Technologies. It's a new report management system that we implemented. We went live with it February first of two thousand and twenty-five. Previously, we were using Alert for our report management purposes. It's been a little bit of a rocky road, but we were able to navigate it to where we are now, and we have a good understanding of it. The officers, for the most part, seem to like it, mainly because of the ease, the ease of access. Along with Tyler Technologies, with the report management system that you saw on the previous screens, law enforcement mobile, which is inside their vehicles, allows them to, allows them to conduct and do most of their reports inside the vehicle, which is then transferred over to the previous report management system. The other good thing about this is that we collaborated with North Cornwall Township in North Lebanon with the newly formed Lebanon County Regional, so we all share records. Their database of individuals and vehicles and things of that sort, we're able to search that and vice versa. It's great for information sharing between our sister departments that border us. Also significant, along to go with Tyler Reporting, Report Management, is our switch to crime reporting, the way we do crime reporting. Prior to February of two thousand and twenty-five, our crime reporting was done through UCR, which is Uniform Crime Reporting. And as of February first of two thousand and twenty-five, we have switched over to NIBRs, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System. All fifty United States and the District of Columbia are certified to report crime data to NIBRs. Eighty-two percent of the population is covered by NIBRs reporting. A hundred and twenty-five of the hundred and fifty-four agencies serving a population of over two hundred and fifty thousand are reporting to NIBRs. There's only eleven percent of Pennsylvania law enforcement agencies that are currently reporting. So we are certainly ahead of the game. The two, the main difference between the way we used to report crime statistics and how we report crime statistics now is that uniform crime reporting utilized a hierarchy rule. So if, if I had an offense such as homicide or rape, that would be my highest, most serious offense. That would be the only offense that we would account and report to the FBI and the state. With NIBRs, it provides a more detailed view of crimes that are occurring. For example, if I do have a rape, I might also have a theft involved in there. That theft would also be reported with the, with the rape and all other offenses. There's a short video here that's going to describe some of it, but the mayor and I talked, and we were concerned possibly regarding crime statistics. We don't have anything to compare UCRs to. We don't have any, like our stats this year, we have nothing to compare it to. So violent crimes from NIBRs, generally, people believe that there's an apparent increase in reported crime by doing, by submitting through NIBRs. However, violent crimes from NIBRs were, on average, less than one percent higher than UCR data. And property crimes saw slightly larger, but still modest increases from anywhere from two to three percent. So it's not going to, it's not going, our crime numbers aren't going to get out of control. They're just going to bump up maybe a percentage due to the more detailed scope of the crime reporting that's going on. Here's a video. Kind of help you understand how that works. Hopefully. It worked before. No. So just to give you an example, and this will explain in a little bit, but there's two types of groups. There's Group A and Group B types of crimes. Group A crimes fall into three different categories. That's crimes against persons. That would include things like assault offenses, homicide, human trafficking, kidnapping, and sex offenses. Crimes against property, which are arson, bribery, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and so on. And finally, crimes against society, which is animal cruelty, drug-related offenses, weapons law violations, and those sorts. Group B crimes would be examples like driving under the influence of alcohol, public drunkenness, public intoxication, and those are only reported to the state, and they're only reported if there's an arrest made. Group A offenses, all of the ones I just listed, are reported by incident, not by arrest. So if we get a report of one of those, that gets reported to, that gets reported to the FBI.
So if I can interject. So bottom line, it's very different, and there's really no way you can do a comparison. So when I give the state of the city in March, I won't be able to compare and say we've had a decrease or an increase because you just can't. They, when you're going from the serious crime, you know, part one, part two, it just, they're all now mixed.
Not having any luck, you know? All right, well then I'm gonna.
Well, we can send you the link. We'll email it to you.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Additionally, what the new reporting software, the report management software that has allowed us to do is create a more detailed and for monthly reporting, I can, I'm able to track what my officers do during the month, and it gets nice little bar graphs and pie charts and things like that. And it also, it helps me understand in different zones. I can run reports where crime is occurring in different zones of the city, and it's, it's a little bit difficult to learn, but we're getting there. But it's really an asset that I can pull data from our report management system and make, and get information like this from there. Recently, we enacted a animal drop-off authorization form in coordination with the Humane Society. This became, as a result, when I was preparing for the two thousand and twenty-six budget, I observed that the city of Lebanon were getting charged for dogs that weren't found in the city of Lebanon. The Humane Society does a great job, and they, you know, the volunteers do a great job. But I started searching around different ways that we can do this process with the stray animals so that it was responsible and accurate. So I started checking around with other municipalities. Other municipalities require people to, if they find a stray dog on the street, they must have a form signed by a police officer authorizing its drop-off, that you can go drop it off. They'll verify where it was found. They'll verify that the person isn't just abandoning the dog, and it's also responsible for the taxpayers that were not paying for other municipalities' dogs that are being turned in. Crime Watch, this is our report from January of two thousand and twenty-five through June of two thousand and twenty-five to date. This is kind of like some of the activity that we have on our Crime Watch page. We're on pace to beat last year. As you can see, there was a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy visits. Last year, we had two hundred and six thousand, but we're only halfway, this is only halfway through the year in June. So we're gonna, we're gonna increase that greatly. There's two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty Crime Watch law enforcement agencies just in Pennsylvania that have Crime Watch. As you can see, is, are visits to our site, we're ranked number eight out of two hundred and thirty-five police departments for the first half of the year, and we're ranked number eleven, just below departments like Lancaster City and places like that by content, by the amount of content we post. Should be noted that we don't have, the city police department doesn't have anybody with the police department that sole job is to recruit, advertise, and do this. This is a Robert of effort between myself, the captain, and the lieutenant to be able to do this. Several arrests have been made throughout the year as a result of the Crime Watch page, tips and investigations that we've received. And we've been included in hundreds of community events throughout the city so far this year. Just to name a few, National Night Out, trunk or treat, Police Read to Me every Saturday, Big Brother, Big Sister Program, Grandma Cruiser with the James Beaver Foundation, the school visits we do, and a lot more. And that is my update for the night.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you coming here on Monday rather than Thursday. I just, I thought it would be valuable with these changes in reporting for, in our council meeting for best communication from the public as these new numbers come out. So thank you for explaining that. With that, I have a couple of questions. So they, so with the reporting more details, I mean, this is, seems like it's a straightforward explanation. These, this detailed reporting to, you know, the state, to the federal departments. I'm guessing that it's just more valuable, just as you are able to create these spreadsheets. It also is better for the FBI. That would be the value.
It just creates a more detailed picture of the incidents.
So, and you're assuming, again, without being able to have a strong comparison, that it's going to be some inflation in the numbers, though not great?
Minor.
Minor, okay. That's good to hear.
But it's important, it's important to, to understand, though, it's not because the crime rate is going up or there's more crimes occurring. It's just the manner in which they're being reported.
Right. Correct, yeah. I think that that was pretty much what I had. I think you answered my other question further on your previous, or your presentation. So council, do you guys have any questions?
Chief, one question. With NIBRs, is there a specific intel gathering section that, that you're able to, you and the department are able to use?
Yes, I can pull all kinds of data from, from the reporting that we have and give me an idea, including heat maps and things like that, and timeframes that certain crimes are occurring. That's not necessarily NIBRs. That's the reporting system. That's allowing me to pull that and take a, and take a look what potential problems we may have in the city.
And, and you had mentioned that only eleven percent?
In Pennsylvania.
In Pennsylvania, but will this become a requirement statewide?
That is the plan.
The plan?
Yeah, it's actually nationally, they're hoping, the FBI is hoping to get everybody involved with it.
All right, thank you.
That was my other question, actually. So you started this, at some time this year, you started, you switched to this system?
We, we started it with the implementation of the new report management system. So when we started that in February, February one of two thousand and twenty-five is when we started the NIBRs reporting. We had to go through an entire certification process just to submit, to make sure that we understood it, so that we submitted accurate numbers to the state and the federal government.
And we actually started in two thousand and twenty-four. We only actually implemented it and switched over in February, but this has been a long planned effort, and it is because of ARPA funding through the county and the city's funds that we were able to do the new record management system and then the switch to NIBRs. And everything that includes that you need to have in order to do both of those things.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Karen looks.
So, so January first of, or January of two thousand and twenty-five, this has been, this has been in the works for quite some time, but January of two thousand and twenty-five was the last time we submitted UCRs. We submitted UCRs in January of two thousand and twenty-five to the state, and February we started. So, no, because I don't have. Yeah, my video would have helped you, but I couldn't get it to work. No, they're not, they're not the same, and even if you did, even if you did try to do it, it would not be
Helpful.
Helpful or relevant to it because it's so different.
Any other questions from council? All right, and from the press? And anyone from the public, questions for the captain, for the chief? Keep wanting to say captain, I apologize. Yeah, come on up, sorry.
Cornell Wilson, twenty-seven South Sixth Street. Is a blue meter handicapped, or do you have to have a sign?
I'm sorry, what?
Is a meter painted blue for handicap, or it was just painted blue oddly for some reason? So it's a regular meter, it's just happened to be painted blue?
Aren't some of the yellow ones, don't they signify thirty minutes?
Yeah, but we're going away, and in order to do something that's more aesthetically pleasing, all of the meters eventually will be refurbished and painted black, and then they'll have a decal on the front that goes in accordance with our ordinance. Yellow is two hour, red is thirty minutes, silver, silver, gold, and red. So the gold, I believe, is the ten hours, the silver is the two hours, and the red are thirty minutes. So they'll have a decal on the front. So if there's a blue meter head, maybe a long time ago, when they did the meter space, maybe they painted it blue? I don't know.
There is a confusion with that, and there's also confusion. There's probably a meter missing, and if people park in that spot, they still get a ticket, but they shouldn't get a ticket if there's no meter. It's on South Sixth Street in front of my place. So some people let it go, and some people don't let it go. So there's a confusion. Is this handicap? Is there a missing spot? So you might want to just, I would like to check that. It's the first two on, I guess it'd be the west side. I believe there's a meter missing, and this other one appears to be handicapped, but we not sure.
Obviously, if they're getting a meter ticket where there's no meter, I would encourage whoever that is to bring the ticket in, so we can take a look at it.
I already did once, but I will again.
And other, and you can still get ticketed if you're there for more than two hours. If they chalk the tires, it's a two-hour violation. At a meter.
At a meter. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Cornell. Any other questions for the chief? Okay. All right, again, thank you for your presentation. A lot of information to go over. I look forward to watching the video. And then we'll move on. So, thank you, Eric. All right, so we have two communications. Tonight, our first communication is from the PA Auditor General, Timothy DeFor transmitting the audit report of the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association is legally separate from the city and from the nine volunteer fire departments that they support and represent. The city only turns over the monies distributed by the state, and that revenue is generated from a two percent state tax on fire insurance premiums that are purchased by Pennsylvania residents from out-of-state insurance companies. In this particular audit, and these audits are performed every two years, the Relief Association received two findings during this period of time. The first finding was that the association did not maintain a high enough bond coverage to cover their cash balance in their account, but they did correct that on March seventeenth of this year. The other audit finding was the association expended monies on unauthorized expenses. They had expended money on refreshments for meetings, and they also paid a grant consultant and a grant application fee. All of these unauthorized expenses totaled one thousand five hundred and three dollars. I do not believe that there was any malicious intent with this. I think it was done innocently. The refreshments, it's my understanding that they had done this for many years, but they had a new auditor this round, and this auditor brought to their attention that they were not allowed to do that. So they, of course, are not going to be doing that in the future. So, you know, the one item, they corrected immediately, and they do have a high enough amount of bond coverage to support the amount of funding in the bank, so hopefully, moving forward, they'll be fine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions from council regarding this communication? And from the press? And anyone from the public? All right. Our next communication is from Mayor Sheri El Capello, informing council of the appointment of Ed Lynch to the City of Lebanon Authority to fill the unexpired term of George Christensen effective November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. And this term expires January first, two thousand and twenty-eight. And Mayor?
So Mr. Lynch's background is, he's a certified professional insurance agent. He's the director of marketing. He's also a volunteer coach at Lebanon Valley College and for the Lebanon School District. He's served on the city's zoning hearing board for the past twenty years, and Ed had asked if he could fill George's term as he was friends with George, and he also had an interest in serving in that role.
So one question that I had with this communication, so Ed has served twenty years on zoning hearing. Is he gonna be, can he serve on both, or does he have to resign from zoning hearing in order to move over?
No, he can serve on both, and Bob Hoffman currently does so as well.
Okay, I wasn't sure about that, so thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council?
I would, for one, would just like to thank publicly, thank Ed Lynch for twenty years of service and now taking on more duties, so huge thank you.
I will let him know.
Any questions from the press? And anyone from the public? All right. Next, we have one resolution. This is Resolution Thirty-four, authorizing the disposition of various records in the police department and finance office. And do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number Thirty-four?
So moved.
And do I have a second? Okay, and I will pass this off to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the city, all local government, is required to follow the municipal records manual, which is issued by the local government records committee, by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, Bureau of the Pennsylvania State Archives. This is as amended March twenty-eighth of two thousand and nineteen. So at Thursday's pre-council meeting, I had indicated that we needed to amend the resolution, and that was done. What we amended was the officers' logs to only include years twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two because it's a three-year requirement. Also, the activity logs was changed to just twenty-twenty-two and dispatch logs to just twenty-twenty-two. We also added the word administrative for miscellaneous administrative files from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one. So we did verify that all of the records that we're requesting do comply with the manual, and I feel confident that we are good with that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from, from council? From the press?
Chris Coyle from Lev Town. Are these records paper, electronic, a combination? Do you know?
So these are all paper.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from press? And from the public? Okay, Cheryl, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Wire?
Yes, sorry, my phone was muted, yes.
Mr. Morales?
Yes.
Potash?
Yes.
Herman Martin?
Yes, and that is five in favor. Resolution Number Thirty-four is moved. All right, next, we have our list of ordinances. Our first is Bill Number Twenty. And this is amending the Article nine thirty-four, Parks of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lebanon, Pennsylvania, for the purposes of adding a new subsection, establish rules and regulations and fees to the Dog Park and Coleman Memorial Park. And this bill is on final reading, but there is an amendment. So do I have, at this time, a motion to adopt Bill Number Twenty or the amendment for Bill Number Twenty?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, excuse me, to amend Bill Twenty. And that's Section one K. We added the verbiage, said dogs. And the second section was Section Two, Part B. And we added a three-day pass.
Thank you, George. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there any other discussion at this time regarding the amendment for this bill? Okay. Then Cheryl, would you please call the roll?
Yes? Wire?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and the amendment is adopted. So now, for the same bill, Bill Number Twenty, and this will be on final reading, now carrying the amendment. Do I have a motion to adopt Bill Number Twenty?
I'll, for a second, motion to as well as amended.
Okay, thank you, George, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, and I will open up the floor for any discussion on Bill Number Twenty. So mayor?
So the following rules and regulations will be made for the Dog Park in Coleman Memorial Park. The Dog Park is open to the public from dawn to dusk unless otherwise posted. All dogs must be registered and have a valid paw pass prior to use. Dog owners are legally responsible for the dog's behavior and for any injury or damage caused. Owners must closely accompany their dogs at all times and remain within the enclosure with them. It's not permitted for one person to supervise two dogs located in different areas. For example, one dog in the large dog area and one dog in the small dog area. No unattended dogs are permitted at any time. Abandoning animals is prohibited by law. Maximum of two dogs per handler in the park at one time. Dogs must be leashed unless they're in the designated unleashed area only. Small dog area is for dogs weighing less than thirty pounds. And although not recommended, small dogs may enter the large dog area at the owner's discretion and risk. Large dogs are not permitted in the small dog area. No children under ten years of age are permitted inside the park. Minors ages ten through seventeen must be accompanied by an adult. Owners shall clean up after themselves and their dogs. Waste bags and trash cans are provided. Aggressive dogs are prohibited and may result in immediate loss of park access for said dog. Dogs in heat or that are ill are not permitted in the park. All dogs must be licensed and properly vaccinated for rabies, distemper, parvirus. Heartworm and flea tick prevention are strongly recommended. Puppies under six months of age are not permitted until fully immunized. Prong, choke, or spike collars are not permitted. Owners shall discourage their dog from digging to maintain safe conditions for all. No smoking, alcohol, food, or glass containers are permitted in the park. Professional dog training is prohibited without written permission from the city. All applicants are required to sign an acceptance of risk and release of liability waiver form. To help offset operating costs, propose to implement a small user fee for access to the facility. The annual fee for up to two dogs for non-city residents is forty-five dollars. There's a discount for city residents, and that would be thirty dollars. The three-day pass, that would be if you're a city resident or non-resident, is fifteen dollars. Each additional dog above the two is ten dollars per dog. And if we issue access cards or fobs and you lose it, the replacement fee is ten dollars.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions from council regarding this bill?
And mayor, this can be done online, the application process?
Yes.
Any other questions? From the press?
Chris Coyle from Levtown, again, any idea on when the park might open? I realize that was up in the air on Thursday night.
Yeah, I still haven't gotten any word from the agency that's representing the city that does the inspections. I believe because of the holiday, we probably won't know until next week.
So, sounds like not before the first of the year.
Probably not. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Yep, eventually.
Any, any other questions from the press? And from the public regarding Bill Number Twenty? Okay. Cheryl, could you please call the roll?
Yes?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and that's five in favor. Bill Number Twenty is adopted on final reading as amended. Next, we have Bill Number Twenty-one, and this is making the appropriations for the City of Lebanon, PA for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. And this bill is on final reading, and I'm going to make a motion to adopt Bill Number Twenty-one. And do I have a second? Thank you, Karen, and I will open the floor for discussion. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So overall revenues proposed to increase by eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand twenty-two dollars to fifteen million two hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. It's a six-point-two percent increase. Expenditures will increase by one million twelve thousand seven hundred and seven dollars or five-point-nine-three percent increase to eighteen million ninety-nine thousand and fifty-seven dollars.
Thank you, mayor. And just again, to your office, your staff, the department heads, again, here, final time, thank you for your sharp pencils and the responsibility you've taken in these, in, you know, caring for these funds, caring for these tax dollars. And I also just wanted to say, too, for the record, my appreciation for the citizens of this city, the taxpayers that have, you know, through blood, sweat, and tears, you know, we're all working to, to make our lives better. And through that, you know, the incomes have increased, and because of that, our revenues have been able to increase. And that is, has been meaningful that our job has been made easier because our revenues continue to increase. So just, yeah. We have a good city, a strong city. We're healthy, we're growing, and that continues to be proven over year and year. Any other thoughts or questions from council? Okay, and from the press?
So mayor, the shortfall between the revenue figure and expenditure figure, that'll be made up by a carryover, I take it?
I'm sorry, yes, so we'll be utilizing excess carryover to balance the budget.
Difference between those two figures.
I apologize for not stating that.
Sorry.
Any other questions from the press or public? Okay. Cheryl, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Morales?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and that is five in favor. Bill Number Twenty-one is adopted. Next, we have Bill Twenty, Number Twenty-two. And this is providing for the tax levy of the City of Lebanon, PA for the, for the year two thousand and twenty-six, and this is on introduction. And as noted on our agenda, there's a public hearing scheduled for our pre-council meeting in December, for December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, at four forty-five. And do I have a motion to adopt Bill Number Twenty-two on introduction? Thank you, Karen, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. And I will open the floor for discussion. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The city's current millage rate is four-point-five-eight-one mils. We propose no tax increase for the eleventh year. An average assessed value is a hundred and four thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars, which represents four hundred and seventy-nine dollars in tax, or it's a dollar thirty-one cents a day, which I indicated on Thursday that I thought that was a very good bargain to get police and fire protection twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, snow plowing, salting, yard waste, recycling, all of the services that we provide here at the city for a dollar and thirty-one cents each day.
I concur. Any questions for the mayor or anything regarding this bill from council? Okay, from the press? And anyone from the public? All right. Cheryl, would you please call the roll?
Yes? Yes. Mr. Wire?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Potash?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes, and that's five in favor. Bill Number Twenty-two has been adopted on introduction. And then our final piece is an ordinance, Bill Number Twenty-three. And this is amending subsection one nine zero seven point zero five, licenses and inspections of Article one nine zero seven, residential rental licensing and inspection of the codified ordinances of the City of Lebanon, Pennsylvania for the purpose of increasing annual license fees. And this bill is on introduction. And do I have a motion to adopt Bill Number Twenty-three?
I'll make the motion to adopt Bill Twenty-three.
And I'll second that. And at this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a reminder, if you would please note that this is a part of the two thousand and twenty-six budget adoption. So the fees for our municipal rental license program covers the costs of enforcing and maintaining local housing and safety standards, as well as funding the staff for operations needed to process applications, license renewals, and to maintain a registry of all rental properties. We're also changing how and when we bill. The process will be more efficient with the new software, and we will be able to handle sending all of the invoices out at the same time instead of billing only several wards at a time between March and September. So we haven't determined what month yet, but it will be sometime in the beginning of the year. All the invoices will go out, and then people will have thirty days. Let me just double-check. So they have thirty days to pay the bill, but if they don't pay within sixty days, then they'll have a penalty added. And we're increasing the residential, residential rental unit fee from forty to sixty dollars, and the fee for rooming house units from twenty to thirty dollars. And the fees that are in place right now have been in place since the implementation of this program back in two thousand and six. So we have not raised the fees at all since we started the program.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from council?
Mayor, how do those, those, those costs compare to surrounding municipalities?
So I apologize I didn't bring it with me tonight, but we're right in the middle. So a lot of the fees range from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty. The first time, we talked about this during the budget session, I had that information. But yeah, it ranges, yeah, we're kind of right in the.
And what about some of the bigger cities? Do you know, like Lancaster, are we well below or kind of in line?
I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. I can make sure that I have it before you adopt it on final. I want to say that Lancaster is a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty, but I, I can look it up. I'm sure Google knows.
Okay, so I mean, we're substantially lower than?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And from the press? And any questions from public? Okay. Cheryl, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Potash?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes, and that is five in favor. Bill Number Twenty-three has been moved on introduction. And that brings us to the end of our formal council agenda for this evening. If you have the, the council agenda in front of you, if you flip around to the back, you can see our meeting schedule for next month. So our pre-council meeting will be December eleventh at four forty-five, and our council meeting at December fifteenth, obviously moved forward in the month for the holiday schedule, so. Yeah, at this time, I will open the floor up for council and the mayor if there's anything that they'd like to bring to the table for the good of the city. All right.
I, actually, I'll make a comment. I think you guys did a fantastic job with the tree lighting. The parade was very nice. The Grinch appreciated the mayor's pardon.
So that, that Grinch was one naughty boy, I'm telling you. He, not only did he steal the kids' candy canes, the lights from the Christmas trees in the downtown that we worked so hard to make it look so beautiful, but he also stole the key to the city. I couldn't believe it when I reached in that bag and saw that key.
Well, the good thing is he put me on retainer now, so.
The Grinch felt bad, and his heart grew three times its size, so the kids loved him. Thank you, George, for doing that.
Yeah, thank you, George. That was really fun. I was laughing the whole time.
It was fun. I think we had more fun than the kids.
I know my two boys, especially my youngest, was, was pretty scared, but that was so much fun. I had no idea what was going to happen, so good job on, on making it a good night, so.
And the parade was beautiful. I mean, it was, it was a great two days, yeah. And we have carriage rides coming up on December fifth and twelfth on Friday nights. You can register online. So yeah, they'll be going around the downtown. And yes, thank you, Janelle. I have a little birdie whispering in my ear here. So December fourth, at six PM here in this room, we're having a stakeholders' meeting for the public. Anyone that has any interest in the downtown and its future, we are going to be talking about what we're going to be doing. We're also have put out a survey for people who visit the downtown, work in the downtown, own property in the downtown, any stakeholder. We would ask that you please complete the survey. It is available online. If you don't have access electronically, please get ahold of Janelle, and she can hook you up with a paper copy. But yeah, we're moving forward with our retail strategy for the downtown, and that's one of the first steps.
What time is that meeting?
Six PM.
Has that been posted on social media yet, or, okay? I'll have to share that. Anything else from council or the mayor?
Janelle?
All right, any more questions from the press at this time? And then I'll open the floor to the public. If anyone has anything they'd like to share tonight, the floor is yours. Okay. Quiet night. All right, then.
I will add one thing since Ed's here, I mean, Chris is here, sorry. So we have a survey that we put together for the residential permit parking, and we're getting ready in the next couple of days. We should be mailing that out or somehow getting that to all the residents in the immediate area.
I know a reader or two that's interested in that.
Okay. Yep. So we completed the survey on Friday.
Appreciate that.
And it's just a matter of getting all the addresses together and getting that out.
Very well, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
And I did see a hand go up in the back, so come on up. And you know the drill, name and address.
Dave Ekman, forty-seven Berberin Park. I'm here on behalf of the Community of Lebanon Association. I want to say thank you to the mayor and the city for your cooperation and cooperation in the parade this past weekend. in the parade this past weekend and tree lighting. Without what you do, it would not happen. So, thank you from CLA. Thank you for the residents. And just a reminder, since you stole my thunder, that carriage rides are going on the first two Fridays in December. Interested parties are encouraged to reserve tickets on the CLA's website, and they will be held on Eighth Street at the front of the market. So, thank you.
So, I want to say thank you to CLA and all of your members, because it truly would not happen without you guys. So, we play a small part.
Yes. Yeah, it's incredible. So, my other question about the carriage rides, just, do you know there's still tickets? Because every year, well, most years, I've missed getting one.
Stop procrastinating.
Yeah. That is my middle name.
Do it. Do it now.
My wife even requested this year. She was like, you know, we were at the tree lighting. She was like, I would like to do that this year. So, I have, I have some work to do, but there's still some tickets available? All right. Very good. All right. I'm gonna go home and do that. So, anything else? Then, at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Hold on, Brian. Was there something else that you were suggesting people fill out online for the, the baloney drop and some other things for, it was
So, we're, when does that end? Okay. So, we still have some time to vote for. The USA Today nominated the city as one of the top 10 places for a special drop, and readers can vote for who is the number one choice. So, we need everyone to please vote for the City of Lebanon's baloney drop.
Thanks for bringing that up. It's a good piece.
And I think we have that on our social media as well.
Yeah, and I should reshare that, too.
Maybe we should repost it. Okay. Janelle's already on top of it.
All right. Okay. Then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a